Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us on this beautiful Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, October 28th, 2014. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Invitation today, we're honored to have Pastor Jesse Lyles of the Willow Hills Baptist Church. And I will lead us in the pledge.
All right, pray with me. Father God, it is a very beautiful day, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for that we live in this area that is attractive to so many people from all over the United States that wants to come here and live here. Thank you, Lord, for the colors, the changing in the trees' leaves. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here. And it'd be in a community where there's so many volunteers who help out in so many ways and through organizations that work together, through city councilmen and mayors who work together for the betterment of this community. Lord God, we just ask for your wisdom as they determine some things here today and help them as they lead this community in doing some right things, some good things. So, Father, thank you for that, as we invite your presence here. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kirkendall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Kupneo.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Any announcements?
Mayor, just very briefly, there is a public meeting tonight here at 6:00 in the council chambers. Subject to that public meeting are the utility rates and rate-setting process. That topic will be taken up by the council prospectively next week on November 4th at a public workshop. And then there will be a second public meeting in council chambers here on November 6th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, and that's tonight at 6:00?
Tonight at 6:00 PM.
In the council, okay. We have one proclamation that Charlie will read. And Kathy, you're here, so come down and join us.
Come on up.
Okay.
You're onstage. You're on TV. You're on TV.
Tax credit giving month, November 2014. Whereas the state of Arizona tax credit program enables taxpayers to contribute $200 for a single taxpayer and $400 for taxpayers filing a joint tax return and receive a dollar-for-dollar tax credit on their Arizona bill, and whereas the full amount can be given to a qualified charitable organization of their choice and a school of their choice. And whereas taxpayers can use their tax dollars to express their beliefs and values by supporting a charity that does the work they hold dear, and whereas by donating to a qualified charitable organization and a school, taxpayers are in effect giving the opportunity to choose how to use a portion of their tax dollars. And whereas taxpayers no longer need to itemize in order to participate in the Arizona tax credit program, and whereas a donation that qualifies for a state tax credit is also fully deductible on a federal tax return, reducing the federal tax liability, and whereas the Arizona tax credit program is a way of keeping our tax money in this community, and whereas keeping tax dollars local through the charitable giving tax credit builds a stronger and better community at no cost to the donors. Now therefore, Marlin Kirkendall, Mayor of Prescott, Arizona, in partnership with Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, does hereby proclaim November 2014 as charitable tax giving month.
Good job, Charlie. That was hard. I just want to say thank you. I hope that our citizens, quite a few thousands of them qualify for this tax credit and that they'll choose to keep their money here locally rather than use it to fill potholes in other parts of the state. So it's a great opportunity to get to choose where to use your taxes. And please remember, you can give the full amount, both a qualified charity like Big Brothers Big Sisters, and there are many more, and a school, and get the full amount for both back on your taxes.
Kathy, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, moving along, let's go to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that the council has commented on? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 2A, public hearing in consideration of a Series VII Beer and Wine Bar liquor license application from Lynn Vanderhayden, applicant for the Elks Theater and Performing Arts Center located at 117 East Gurley Street. This liquor license application was posted for the required 20 days. It was routed through community development and the police department. There were no public comments that were received and no issues were raised. The application fee has been paid, and the applicant is present and available to answer questions.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Very good, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Good afternoon to you and good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Don Zavala, and I represent the Elks Theater and Performing Arts Center. And we're here with the liquor license application today. As I think you might know, this will allow the Elks Theater to continue operating in a similar manner to what the city operated as before the purchase by the Elks Theater. And it'll be beer and wine only, and it'll be primarily before performances and during intermissions.
Good. And that's same function as we did for years.
Yes, it is.
Good. The place looks great.
It does, doesn't it? A lot of work is going into that. I think it's a really good community asset and something we can all be very proud of.
Yeah. Comments from the council? No one? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the license?
Move to approve liquor license application number 07137003 for a Series VII beer and wine license for the Elks Theater and Performing Arts Center located at 117 East Gurley.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Go uncork the model.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, item B.
Item 2B, presentation update regarding the special event application and approval process.
Joe, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, council. First off, before I start, I just wanted to say, this is something that we go through every year to look at the process, see if there's things that we can do to make the process better for the stakeholders and the community as well as the event promoters. This year, I think we kind of went a little bit further than we typically have in that we had several public meetings and private meetings with a lot of the stakeholders. So we got a lot of good input from those folks, and hopefully we've got some good recommendations here. Just a little bit of background, special events are an important part of sales tax generation for the city, one of our most important sales tax generation items. Special events are held at various venues throughout the city, not just downtown. For example, Pioneer Park, we do some at Granite Creek Park, Watson Lake, Willow Lake. We've got a lot of other venues that we do special events on, and not just the downtown. Prescott is unique among many cities because of the appeal of the Courthouse Plaza as well as the history of downtown. So a lot of these special events really like to situate themselves down in that history and down in that place of appeal. So we're really lucky because a lot of communities would like to have the same kind of interest in special events that we have here. In 2007, the most recent available data, our data available, the visitors spent $119 million in the city that generated about $7.8 million in state and local sales tax revenues. One event alone, the whiskey offer had an economic impact of over $4 million in the Prescott area. And due in large part to these special events, the transient occupancy tax collection has increased 40% over the past four years. So really with the programs that have been put in place and people's desire to be in Prescott for special events has really added to our tax collection when it comes to transient occupancy tax. I just wanted to note that we've, for the first time in five years, we've embarked on, just recently embarked on a new visitor study that NAU will do that just started here shortly. We haven't done one in five years, so that'll help us identify things a little bit better. A little bit about the transient occupancy tax grants. Previous to this program, in a lot of cases, the city had provided some maybe generators or different things to the event promoters, but through the transient occupancy tax grants, we've been able to fund or help those folks fund those things a little differently. In 2011, the program was started for signature events, and in 2013, we divided it into tourism events and community events. The tourism events have a limit of $5,000 of contribution from the city, and the community events a maximum of $2,000. The community event funding is to offset operational costs like traffic control, whereas the tourism event funding goes more towards marketing the event. Those are the events that we want to get the word out throughout the state, even throughout the southwest, that there's something going on here and to get folks down here for those. In fiscal year 14, or excuse me, fiscal year 15, the grant program provided various levels of funding to 11 different tourism events and four community events. So the program's definitely being used, and I think I consider it an investment in these events that there's a return on the investment from the visitor spending. A little bit about the permitting process as it stands right now. We recognize that these special events have a positive economic value. However, we still also understand that we have to balance that value with the other impacts in our community through an effective permit process. So again, every year we look at this, we try to see if there's something we can do a little bit better to alleviate any concerns from any parties and do the best that we can. So the way it works right now is late October, early November, we send out an event criteria letter that basically just says, are you going to do your event again, when you want to do it, and they propose their dates. They need to send those back in by the end of December. Then we start plugging those in. After that, we sit down with Prescott Downtown Partnership to merge the calendars between their calendar for their courthouse events as well as athletic tournaments and other special events that we have going on around town so that we can identify, you know, how the events work together, make sure that they do work together and not against each If there's conflicts that arise, our special events manager will meet with the groups and negotiate maybe a different venue, maybe a different date, and again, just in an effort to make that calendar flow for everybody and so that events don't compete with each other but complement each other.
I have a question.
Yes.
It states that event organizers will respond by the date on the letter, and they're given first priority. Set by who and what are the parameters?
Well, when they, the applications that come back in by the date that they're supposed to be received by, we start plugging those dates in based on them coming back in a timely fashion and picking those dates. Do you mean if there's a conflict between one or another for a specific date?
Well, that and whether one generates more tourism dollars over another, just because one's first over another does not necessarily mean it's a benefit to the community. So who makes that priority call?
We do. We look at that to see where the benefits are, and again, like-
Again, who is "we," Joe?
That's the special events committee along with primarily the Recreation Services Department, Becky Carcy. And so we'll just sit down and find out how they best flow, how they best maximize the economic value for the city of Prescott. We don't have too many conflicts at the first go-around. Sometimes when events flow in a little bit later, we kind of have that little bit of a challenge, but we've been able to work through it in the past.
So I guess what my concern is, maybe not what's best for the community, but are we looking at solely about how much revenue it generates for taxpayer dollars?
No.
Or are we looking at a variety of things?
We're looking at a variety of things. I mean, how the event reflects Prescott's image, if the event has been an ongoing event that's been going on for a number of years. There's a lot of things that go into it. But again, we don't typically have, when those letters come back at the end of December, we don't typically have too many events that are going head-to-head, and when we have had them, we've been able to shift things a little bit. Maybe it's the same day at the same place, but it starts a little bit later or whatever. But we've never really run into a conflict that we couldn't overcome with, you know, sitting the parties down and working it out.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, you know, if conflicts arise, we do sit down and work it out to the benefit of the city, benefit of everybody involved, hopefully. The event organizers are required then to complete the special event application. So you have the criteria letter that says, I want to do this event. Then you have another process that is the special event application, that's the nuts and bolts of what the event is going to be. When are the street closures going to be, if there are street closures? Are you going to have cooking? Are you going to serve alcohol? All of the little details, and that, I believe, is an eight-page application. The final step is a review of each application by the special events committee. The special events committee is made up of different departments throughout the city. We have representatives from police, fire, tax and licensing, risk, sanitation, tourism, recreation services, traffic engineering. So all of the departments that, you know, have some kind of an effect to what they do in the community, they look at that and try to make sure that we have the proper amount of garbage receptacles or try to make sure that we have the proper, you know, paramedics assigned to an event if it's a larger event or whatever that might be. And that's a meeting where the applicant comes and sits in front of the committee, so it's very open. We'll go around the room, and there might be a couple of things from fire that they need to address. They might have to get their insurance turned in, haven't gotten it turned in yet, and risk will bring that up. So I think it's a pretty thorough process from people who are very involved in those events.
Joe?
Yes.
I know before there was discussion of possibly adding community or business folks, somebody from the community on that committee. Have you explored that any further?
That'll be one of the last slide, or second to the last slide, some recommendations. And one of them addresses Mr. Councilman Blair's concerns a little bit, too. So in FY '14, just like I said earlier, every year we make a few little tweaks. In fiscal year '14, we made a few adjustments to the process, too. And we, you know, we identified different event levels in fiscal year '14 and kind of raised the deposits based on the effects, refundable deposits, but based on the effects that the type of event that it has and the location of the event. So new application fees aligned with event levels and were increased for high-impact events and decreased for lower-impact events. New refundable deposits provided an increased deposit for high-impact events that recognizes the impact of street closures surrounding the Courthouse Square, and lower deposits were provided for lower-impact events.
Joe, could we, Jim's got a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. My question may be rhetorical with some of the other comments up here. And my question comes from the fact I've been here for 35 years. I've been downtown for 35 years. I've been in a small mom-and-pop retail environment for 35 years. And in that 35 years, I've worked with tremendous organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, who has also participated with multiple other organizations such as, whether it be Yavapai College or NAU or, you know, one time we had a Yavapai County Industrial Board and blah, 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 to come up with some sort of consistent measuring stick for economic impact of some of the events. The rodeo, for example, being a signature event, can't be argued that whether it's negative or positive, we all know it's a positive event. We know, for example, the Christmas lighting is a positive event. We know that Hacker Theater is a positive event. Has there been developed some sort of measuring stick that can be shared with the public and especially the downtown business community on a more regular-than-not basis with regards to the total economic impact of these events and how it is positively, or what, you know, sometimes there's a negative impact, too. And one of the negative impacts, of course, is on the parking, especially if you're somebody sitting there on a Saturday afternoon waiting for somebody to get to your store that's local that they won't come to your store because they got to fight with a parking issue in the downtown that's been eaten up by the special events. I mean, is this what you're working with NAU on?
Councilman Lamerson, that's correct. Right now, what we've done, the events that have been funded through the transient occupancy tax has been, have been required to follow up with a survey of what they, you know, how many people were from out of town, did you spend, but it's sort of, I won't say informal, but it's not a thorough study. So what we hope to do with NAU is put that in a more succinct document that will give us a better understanding of what that, what the economic impacts are.
Have we at all researched any of the criteria that were put forward before this one? I mean, with regards to the last economic impact studies, for example, either the city or the chamber participated in with various entities such as Yavapai College and NAU in the past?
Not specific to events, and especially not specific to specific events.
Okay.
So we hope to do that in this newest effort by NAU to get that in, so we have a better understanding of what it is.
I think it's important to be able to do that rather than let them direct you on what they want you to hear. Maybe we need to direct them as to the information we're actually looking for. I mean, I would like to know it as an individual who has a personal stake in downtown every day of my life to make sure that my business isn't damaged because we're promoting special events that benefit at a higher regard the people that are having the events than it does the actual people that are paying the freight for the downtown to be here.
Good point, Councilman Lamerson. And we will take that into consideration when we work with NAU on the study because, you know, if your business is inconvenienced from an event but there's a great economic benefit, that's one thing. But if it's impacted and there's not as much of a good, positive economic benefit, then that's a little different.
Thank you.
Steve.
Joe, I just have to ask a question that from time to time, more often than not, I have questions from the downtown merchants or the public asking me if I know what's going on downtown when it comes to special events, and my answer is generally no. I would suggest or even offer the suggestion that maybe somebody on city council is involved with that group so that this council's informed of what is taking place in this community. You know, everybody wants to think this whole-
I am.
This whole group, okay. I didn't know that. So that's good, because this whole group does not know what's going on downtown every weekend of the month, every afternoon at Watson Lake or whatever the case may be. And if we could be more formal about the things that are coming up so that we're aware of the generation of revenues and the generation of the public and the things that are coming into our community, it would be helpful for me.
That's a good point, and I'm sorry, I forgot to point out, we do have a council liaison on the special events committee. But in addition to that, and we'll get to it in a later slide, too, we do have a recommendation or something we want to put in the process, which is our own webpage for special events that's specific to special events, that you can go straight to that link and get there with standardized downloadable site plans for the event promoters. So we have one site plan for a street closure on Cortez or whatever the case might be, but we'll get to that in a minute, but very valid point. So in fiscal year 2014, we broke down the events into levels, as I said, and the Level A events, which is, you know, one of the big things that we're talking about here today, you know, involves the closure and use of streets surrounding the courthouse, and that's requested year-round for various events. This is a high-traffic, multi-use area, retail, restaurant, county court proceedings, general traffic, and other activities that necessitates close scrutiny to balance the impacts and match the events to the appropriate locations based on limited availability. So in other words, we've got a lot of requests for that area. That's where everybody wants to have their special events. But we also recognize that people have businesses to run, that the events might not be conducive to that particular business, but we try to balance those, again, with the bigger picture. And then the levels go down to B and C with D being the final one, and those are ones that are on private property. We would like to be apprised of them so that we can get those onto the calendar so that, again, trying to make the events not compete but complement each other, and that even includes the smaller events. So we did raise the application fee for those type Level A events up to $75. I believe it was at $50 before. And then we raised the refundable deposit from $500 to $1,000, recognizing that the impact of those events is greater than some of the B-type events or C-type events. Again, we did actually lower the application fee for the C-level events, knowing that they have very little impact, and also lowered the refundable deposit on that. And again, the D-level events are private property events. Okay, as revised, Arizona Revised Statute 4-203.02B requires that the special event liquor licenses be approved by the governing body of the city or town where the event is to be held. So this is something that we haven't done, but we will have to do, and it's something that we're taking into consideration in the review of the application process, which mainly will mean that the timelines will move out a little bit. Instead of 60 days, it'll be 90 days to get the application in initially, and then we'll have to get it to council, you know, prior to, and I will share that timeline with you right here. So 90 days prior to the event, the special event liquor license application and payment of fees must be submitted to the city clerk's office. 45 days prior to the event, the application is scheduled to be presented to council for a recommendation. And then no later than 10 days prior to the first day of the event, the application must be submitted to the Arizona Department of Liquor with an approval recommendation from the council. So this is something that's been clarified that we will be doing in this next fiscal year.
So, Joe, just for clarification, under that process and under that state statute, events like the Whiskey Row Fire and the Prescott Strong Event wouldn't be able to occur a week after something or two weeks after something takes place?
That's correct, Councilman Arnold. Unless there's an avenue I'm unaware of that could speed that timeline up, this is something that the governing body would have to approve before it goes to the state. So unless there was some kind of an emergency action, I mean, it's a legal question, but I don't know what the shortest possible timeline would be, but we're recommending 90 days for these special events.
Okay.
And you know what, Joe, I'm kind of tagging off of what he was talking about. There's been times where the event has been posted up and things put up all over town, and they leave something unchecked, and then all of a sudden they're coming up close to the event and they have to speed up that liquor license submittal. I know that's happened in the past to a couple, and, you know, you'd hate to stick Big Brothers Big Sisters or somebody having their event with that. Is there a way, I mean, if we add an extra fee to it for that, is there a way to speed up that process?
Well, there is a, I think that 90 days is sort of an operational decision. In other words, police review it, fire reviews it, planning reviews its street, you know, everybody has to sort of review the liquor application because the special events liquor application, unlike, for instance, the liquor application that was recommended by the council, the board, the liquor department, the liquor board's not bound by that recommendation. On a special event, it's, the city council in this case has the final say. It's not, it can't, in other words, it's sort of binding on the liquor department. It's one of those few instances where city, the city decision is effectively binding on the liquor department to issue the license. The state law says that the application for the license has to be in not, less than 10 days, you know, prior to the event, so the liquor department can sort of review the documents and issue the license. Backing out from there, you know, I won't speak for Joe or the manager, but, you know, the law is, has to be to the liquor department within 10 days, which, you know, at a minimum, you have to have at least 24-hour notice to have a council meeting if you wanted to do it. So you have to add some time. I mean, there is a certain functional time that you have to have before the 10 days. But the law says 10 days, so it has to be approved by the council and sent to the liquor department within 10 days. That other 80 days is essentially the time necessary to do all the necessary review. I would, again, I won't speak for Joe, but, you know, the question really is, you know, are there exceptions to that 90-day requirement? But that's not a legal issue, simply a staff function and an operational question.
And if there's exceptions, then how do we prevent them from being abused but at the same time make them nimble enough that we can get something done? I mean, the two examples I gave were things that were put together very quickly that had a direct impact in the community, but had those events been 90 days later, it would have been very different.
Well, and remember that this is strictly for the liquor license for the charitable event. You know, events, you know, the events can occur. It's, this is, we're strictly talking about the liquor, the sale of liquor as a charitable event.
Right.
And Councilman Arnold, let me look into that a little bit, too, to see what, you know, what the shortest timeline we could get would be. And then to answer your second question would be, if there were a shorter timeline, which I'm not sure that there is, but if there were, we would probably look at, you know, in the interest of that not being abused, look at some sort of a late fee or something like that to discourage that type of use. So the special event liquor license application process would be, the city clerk receives a special event liquor license application, which includes the payment of the fees, a letter of agreement from the agent or owner of the license premises to suspend the license during the event if the special event is being held on a currently licensed premises. during the event if the special event is being held on a currently licensed premises and the special event is not using the retail license. That happens occasionally. Another part of the revised Arizona state statute is that a copy of the contract between the parties, which requires the organization that has issued the license to receive at least 25% of the gross revenues of all spirituous liquor sold at the special event, will be on file with that liquor application. What the state does with that from there, I don't know, but I do know that they do have to have a copy of that contract between, in this case, the nonprofit and the event promoter on file at the State Department of Liquor.
Mayor?
Joe, the 25% of gross alcohol, spirituous revenue, and that would be the state's function to audit and track that?
Now, Councilman Lozelle, whether they audit that or not, I can't tell you. I do know that they have a copy of that on hand. I would add, though, that the nonprofit would probably be the one that would be, in a sense, auditing that, because it's an agreement between the nonprofit and the event promoter. If you're only getting 10% and you're Boys and Girls Club, you know, you're not doing your job unless you get what was contractually agreed upon. So, I think that's more between the contracting parties, in this case, the nonprofit.
But it would not be a city function?
No, in fact, the liquor department will or can audit those kinds of requirements, similar to what it does when it comes to a restaurant license that has to have 40% of its revenue derived from food. They will audit that, you know, and if, especially if the special events are, you know, on a licensed premises, for instance, or if it, you know, if there's any allegations that the charity isn't getting its proper, at least 25%, or whatever, and it's 25% minimum, so if the agreement is 50% to the charity, it's 50%, it's not 25. So, they can audit it if it comes up, but it's not a city function now.
Okay.
Okay, so after the application is approved, it is circulated to a few different departments in the city, Community Development, the Police Department, and Recreation Services, and the Special Events Committee, if the event's held on city property. Then the special event liquor license application will be scheduled for consideration at a council meeting, at least 45 days, and I'll check into this to see if that's, it appears as though that's what it is. At least 45 days, but not later than 30 days prior to the event. The application with council approval is then forwarded to the state Arizona Department of Liquor, no later than 10 days prior to the first day of the event. Currently, the fees are $25 a day, state fee, and the city or Prescott fee is $62 per day, and then, of course, the fees are refunded if the special event application is not approved.
Joe, this might be a question for you or for Mark. At one point in time, there was discussion about whether or not these events were a taxable occurrence for the city. What's kind of the findings related to that?
Well, did you know, if it's a nonprofit event sponsored by a nonprofit, it's not subject to tax, it has a $25 fee per vendor in the event.
So, our, let me come around to it a different way, because this has been something that has been brought up numerous times, it's been discussed at least as long as I've been here. If you have a nonprofit which is providing the special event liquor license, which is what you need in order to get a special event liquor license, that, all of the proceeds from those sales, no matter what those sales are, are not subject to taxation by the city.
If an event is sponsored by a nonprofit, it falls under the nonprofit licensing requirement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'd like actually clarification, because when you, if the event is, say, 50% of the revenue goes to the nonprofit, and the other 50% goes to someone else, I guess I'm confused, because the part that goes to the for-profit entity, if it's a for-profit entity, it's either someone else, is that taxable?
No, the city code has exemption for nonprofit events in it, and again, that was an option that the council put into the code. If not, then a nonprofit event, the way it used to be a long time ago, even if it was Big Brothers, Big Sisters having an event on the square, all the booths would have to get a transient merchant license and pay their tax fees, which are significant, and they were, it was precluding nonprofits from being able to have those type of events. So, the council at the time put in the nonprofit-sponsored event with the $25 per vendor fee. And again, that was a council decision that can be changed whenever the council wishes.
So, continuing down that line of thought for a minute, because, again, this is our opportunity to talk about things that, you know, have been brought up to us, that have been concerns of folks, and as we're looking at these changes, understanding that some of these events bring a lot of out-of-town folks in, fill up our hotels, bring out-of-town dollars, which creates sales tax revenue in other areas. When we're looking at cost recovery from these events, are we able to cost-recover what we feel we need to through our fees and other processes, or do we need to reevaluate the sales tax collection on these events? It's a very long-winded question, but it's part of the concerns that have been brought up constantly.
Well, and again, there's also other agreements in place as well, like events on the Courthouse Square, the Prescott Downtown Partnership receives half of those fees, so, you know, half of that goes to them to help sponsor their organization. You know, if council wants to review or change fees, we can bring that back as an option.
Mark, what's the, what's the position of the state as far as collecting sales tax on spirituous liquor sales on the Courthouse Square?
If, I'm not sure in state tax law, I'd hate to speak to that.
Well, it is a taxable event anywhere in the state of Arizona, if there's a transaction, it's a transaction tax. So, is the operator, now, if the operator is a nonprofit, are they subject to state sales tax?
Again, I'm not that familiar with state tax law, I'd hate to give my opinion without researching it.
Well, I agree with Charlie and Chris both. This is now the opportunity for us to take a look at that in depth and have one uniform policy that'll apply to everybody, whether they be profit or nonprofit. But, which brings another question, are we, Joe, this is to you, are we allowing for-profit organizations to utilize the downtown streets and the Courthouse Plaza for profit events?
Well, I think there are a few. The majority that come out at me are nonprofits, but there are a few for-profit events that happen downtown.
Whiskey Off-Road.
Yeah, Whiskey Off-Road.
Whiskey Off-Road comes to mind.
But within that event, the, there's a charitable component to the alcohol sales, but the event itself, the underlying event, is not a nonprofit.
Anyway, we're taking no action today, and before we take any action, it will be an agenda item that the public will have an opportunity for input also. So, what are we talking about today is for our information, and, but now's the time to get the questions out.
Mayor, I agree with the conversation, the way it's going. It's almost like Mr. Blair's complaints about the numerous nonprofit thrift stores and second-hand used stores, and now you've got restaurants and all kinds of things proliferating, and I almost sense that our policy has been setting up unfair competition for nonprofits to benefit off the history and the ambiance of the downtown, whether it be with food or beverage or product or anything else, and not be in the same position as the merchants for, whether it's food, alcohol, jewelry, et cetera, to benefit without having to collect the tax off their customer, like the merchants around the downtown business have to. So, I really think we do need to review some of what we're doing and the mechanisms in which we've got in place.
You know, Mayor, these events load up downtown. It brings tons of people downtown. When it comes to the charities, I mean, we're calling them nonprofits, a lot of these are charities. You know, they have to get their money to function from somewhere, they do a lot of good things in the community, and by running these events is a great way to raise money for them. You know, Boys and Girls Clubs, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, all these things get a lot of money from this, and when you have a promoter, and I think we bag on that a little too much, but that promoter does everything. He invests in, or she, invests in the fencing, invests in the staff, invests in the jumpy castles, invests in coordinating all the liquor companies to come out, gets all this done, puts all that money up front. All the charity has to do is show up and pick up a check. It's the easiest thing in the world, and sometimes these events raise quite a bit of money, and when you think, okay, you're going to get 25% to help your organization out, that's a great deal. You know, I went to one promoter, and I said, you know what, we need to raise money for the Zeit Sister City Project. Okay, we'll have this event. Well, we got this event. All they had to do was show up and pick up a check. They can also put up a booth at this event to promote their charity and make it bigger and bigger. Went back and said, you know what, Caborka needs some money for, they're trying to help the orphanage down there. Can you have an event? Sure, they had an event. 25% of that money goes to that organization, and they can help fund what their mission is. So, I mean, let's not get too critical on this nonprofit deal, because not only do they help our charities, and they help our town out significantly, but it loads up the downtown. I was out with my wife Friday night downtown, and it was very, very slow. Well, we had nothing going on down there. You know, when the Whiskey Row Street Dance in the Fourth of July, that was packed, that whole downtown was packed. I don't know if we'd even have capacity in our restaurants and bars if that wasn't going on down there, because when that event shut down, there was a line coming out of Matt's waiting to get in, there was a line coming out of Mokta Zuma's waiting to get in. You know, by handling a lot of the portajons like I do for, with my business, I'm there when they set up, and I'm there when they tear down, and I see it. And without these events down there, it's not as busy. We flood it. You know, Jersey Lily's was packed, you know, and it just seems like it's very good. So, let's not get too crazy with this, I mean, because a lot of us remember back when there was not a lot of events downtown. There's people mulling around, and yes, there's tourists, but I think a lot of times, we have to encourage the businesses to work with these special events. And I've said this before, when we had the Whiskey Row Off-Road, this council invested, what was it, $20,000 into that event, plus other things? I was walking down here on the Sunday of that event, and it was a quarter to 11:00 in the morning, we wanted to get something to eat. Devil's Pantry was closed, we went to the Brewing Company, it was closed, we went to the office, it was closed, we finally had breakfast at the Lone Spur, and they had a waiting line coming out of the building. You know, how many times have we seen these special events, where it was the Whiskey Row Street Dance for Fourth of July, the businesses on Whiskey Row, a lot of them were shutting down at 5:00? You know, the tourists, we load the place up with tourists, and they're putting their little hands up to the window to see what's inside, inside the stores. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of things we can work on to help the businesses work with the events and promote themselves better, but, you know, when we do something like the Whiskey Off-Road, and we bring 6,000 people to your front door, you got to do something to bring them in. You know, we're getting them out there, and if you're closed and not open for business, yeah, it's going to be a detriment to, this event's going to be a detriment to what you're doing.
Greg, you have something?
No.
Mayor, I just had a comment based on what you said, Chris. I think working with the Downtown Partnership and the businesses that are downtown to coordinate the timing of events and special opening hours that they may have would improve the situation you're talking about and help their business.
Yep, and Chris, along the lines of what you're talking about, I mean, somebody who lives on downtown, I mean, I am there 24/7 and get to see it. The events have a very positive impact, there's no doubt. There's things, and it's what Joe's talking about, it's what the stakeholders are talking about, we've got to tweak. I mean, a prime example is the Whiskey Row Marathon. It's a great event, it brings marathon runners from everywhere, it brings a ton of people into downtown, several of the facilities open, the bars and restaurants are open doing hot chocolate and all sorts of things. But then, the runners are gone, they're out into the course, and Whiskey Row stays closed until 2:00, because that's when the last runner's going to come through the intersection of Goodwin and Montezuma. So, we've blocked off downtown for pretty much the entire morning and halfway into the afternoon, so that the finish line is more conveniently placed. It's things like that that we've got to figure out how to do better, and understand some of the things that may be out there that aren't accurate. You know, we need to understand the taxation, because there's, you know, an example, I've been told the Eagles doesn't have to pay tax what they sell down at their bar, but what I have come to learn is that they do pay sales tax when they sell something. And it's trying to get good information out to people, it's trying to make sure that we understand the policies, the business owners understand the policies, and we've got policies that are clear and don't have a lot of bending. It's, this is what we're doing, so everyone's on the same page.
And you know, Councilman Lamerson was talking about, we need to really study what the impact is on the community, and I think the Whiskey Off-Road was fantastic, it did that, they did a big presentation here, and what did we find out? That every participant in that event had an average household income, I believe it was around $100,000, wasn't it? These are the people that can buy art, they can buy jewelry, they like to drink beer. I mean, these are the people we want in town if we're going to have an economic impact, and we're doing it, but you know what, you need to open your door to allow these people to come in and shop.
I agree with you, Chris, as far as we do bring them in here, but we also have to take in consideration, we have businesses around downtown, all around town, that are here 365 days a year, okay, that are here paying their fair share, keeping their license open. We have to take that in consideration in addition to these events.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
And I think that's through what Jim was commenting, the study of tourism, really what the impact is, is useful. You know, the bars know, that take credit cards, what the zip codes are in those credit cards, they know where their people are coming from. Some are locals bars, and some are tourist bars, it's just the way it is. Some are a blend, but we've got to get that detail to better understand the impact that it's having.
I'm glad that we're taking a look at the issue. I'm not saying we should destroy what we've worked on for at least the 35 years I've been here, creating a destination point, using tourism is the model to do it. What I'm saying is, we need to have a better understanding of what we're doing right and what we could be doing better. And one of the things that I think that we need to take into consideration when we're looking from a policy standpoint, that you don't elevate one group of people under the nonprofit tent. And while I agree with Chris with regards to a lot of things are charity, well, there's a lot of things that aren't charity, and there's, we just need to take a little bit better look at what we're doing, and that's what this discussion's about.
And I think to, Mayor, can I?
Sure.
To the point about the street closures downtown, I think when we had the meeting at the Armory the other night, and a lot of the stakeholders showed up, one of the things that, I know Charlie, you recognized, because you made some phone calls on it, is when the event ends early, like, say, an event ends at 11:00, but on their permit, their street closure is till 3:00 or to 6:00, that street remains shut down. We need to have a contact person, both at the event and at the city, and I think that's probably coming up later on in your talk here, but someone that can say, you know what, our event is over, and the city person says, okay, their event is over, open that street up, and that opens up the parking and the people that can walk on the streets, and, I mean, that's, these things are going to be addressed. And I think we're real close, we don't want to poo-poo too much, but a lot of these things can use some tweaking, and I think that's what we're doing here today.
You're saying where we're at, Joe?
Absolutely, and along those same lines, in an effort to, you know, to get all these issues out, we went a little bit further this year than we typically do, and had a series of stakeholders' meetings to get input from the business owners, get input from the event promoters, and just try to gather as much information as we could, so that we could come up with some solutions or some tweaks to the process that benefit the process. So, here are a few of the meetings that we put together. We met with the Chamber on March 27th, the Whiskey Row Bar Owners on August 7th, we went to the Special Events Committee on October 9th, we met with Eagle Management and Events LLC on the 10th and the 4th of September, and then, as Chris alluded to, we had an open house at the Gray Sparks Activity Center, October 16th, with a lot of the stakeholders there. And again, all it really was, was to gather input from the stakeholders, so that we could see what tweaks we might be able to make to the process. So, through that process, here's some of the proposed adjustments that we're poised to make, and that first one there is to add a special events webpage with standardized site plans that are downloadable, that the event promoters can put their footprint on, so that we're looking at the same plan, whether it's promoter A or promoter C, it's the same standardized plan, as well as having more detailed advanced information for the public, including the downtown realtors, so they can see what the event is. event is, uh, you know, some of the layout of the event, whatever information. Right now, uh, they have to go kind of a circuitous route to the city website, to city services, to recreation services, to special events to get there. We want to streamline that and get it to a, to a page where they can get all the information they want to get about an event in advance of the event. And again, to Councilwoman Wilcox's concern, that may help also with coordinating with PDP and some of the downtown business owners to help create maybe some partnerships or at least create, uh, you know, the knowledge of what's going on and, and how they can, you know, use their entrepreneurial ship to capitalize on what, what the event might be. Uh, we want to create a simple checklist for the event promoters to track their application status. There is a number of steps that they have to go through, obviously. So, we want to try to get a checklist that's going to make them easy to find out where they're at. Uh, we want to add some appeal process information to the application. Currently, there is an appeal process as part of the city code. We want to just kind of get that out there on the application.
And Joe, is that language tight enough for the appeal? Does it clearly explain what that process is so that everyone's on the same page? Or do you think that's something we need to look at and maybe tighten up?
We may need to look at that. I, I've got to take a little better look at that myself just to figure out whether or not it needs a little tweaking. It is in place, it does work, but whether or not it needs to be tweaked, I'll, I'll take a look at that. Um, we obviously will have to adjust the submittal timeline to reflect the liquor license approval process that I just talked about. Uh, one of the things we want to do as part of the site plan review through the Special Events Committee is look a little closer at the safety requirements. Uh, as an example, vehicle to pedestrian, uh, safety concerns where there's a buffer between, you know, if somebody comes up to the street closure and they can make a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn, but instead they hit the gas instead of the brake, that they could go into an unprotected area. Maybe that's some jersey barriers, maybe that's just the, uh, ban shell or the, uh, the, uh, RV that a lot of the events set up. But something, so we're more cognizant of, of the pedestrian to vehicle potential. Uh, so we'll look at that as part of the site plan review. Uh, also, some of the input we got from some of the stakeholders were if we could provide a drop-off and pickup area for handicapped people, that might be helpful. So, we'll look at that. Uh, were applicable, we'll try to do that as part of the site plan review. Maybe it's just bumping that street closure back 20 feet to allow for a pickup and drop up, drop-off zone. Uh, this one was mentioned earlier, we may adjust the membership of the ad hoc Special Events Committee to include a broader downtown representation. Uh, for example, uh, the Prescott, Prescott Area Independence and the Prescott Area Lodging Association, uh, I understand maybe combining boards, maybe it's a person from that board. Uh, we do have downtown representation on the Special Events Committee right now through PDP, but, you know, maybe it's time to broaden that out a little bit so they can see these events coming. And then also, we would like to kind of revise the scheduling procedure to allow 18- to 24-month calendars. We know the Bluegrass is going to be the second week in, in, uh, June. You know, we know some of these things, or third week, excuse me, we know some of these things, when they're going to be coming up. Uh, you know, if we can get out ahead of that, then I think we're just more ahead of the game. So, that's one of the other things that we want to try to put into play, uh, as soon as possible. That's what these items are. Now, these next items on this next sheet are more discussion items for council. I really appreciate the discussion that's happened up to this point because, you know, that's what we need to do is generate the questions so we can come up with the answers to end up with the best product at the end of the day. And so, some of those are, and this is input from the downtown business owners, consider, consider setting a curfew for events where alcohol is served, uh, and there's a street closure, uh, with an exception by council approval. If there was a, a reason that an event should go past a curfew, should you so decide to have one, uh, then they could go, come to council and state their reasons and then you could, you know, make a ruling on that as you saw fit. Um, I, I always use the example of Bruce Springsteen coming to town and saying, hey, I'd love to do a big concert here, but I want to play till 11:00. I think we probably want to take advantage of that, but, um, so there would be an exception by council approval, but I think the concern from the business owners are, and this is the restaurants and the bars mainly, uh, the retailers are typically closed, you know, 7, 8:00, they're closed by then, but I think primarily for the, for the food and beverage and the, the bars is that, uh, you know, if the event closes at, say, 7:00, for example, uh, they may go over to Brick and Bones and, and have a meal. They may go to the Palace and have a meal. They have more opportunity for the local businesses then to capitalize on the people that, that are downtown. So, that's one that had been brought up at several different meetings. One of the other things we talked about was designating and compensating an event boss, which I'm imagining would be somebody from the city, uh, that would be onsite for specific high-impact events to address concerns like Councilman Cookney brought up. You know, the street's supposed to be opened back up at 2:00, you know, it's 1:45, I don't see any activity. Make the phone call, make it happen. Uh, there's not enough port-a-jons, we've, you know, we've got issues with sanitary things. Make the phone call. Uh, somebody that could, could be there through the event, uh, that could, you know, hopefully, um, offset or prohibit or, you know, not allow something to happen that might otherwise happen without somebody being there to take care of it.
And Joe, along those lines and specifically with the event boss, I think that's something that we actively need to look at. There were too many events this year whereby happenstance, I was downtown and there was nobody from the city that the promoters or the participants were able to easily get a hold of to address issues. There was a motorcycle run that came up with several hundred motorcycle riders. By the time they got here, all of the areas that have been marked off for them to park were full of motorcycles from other people. And it was numerous phone calls, which ultimately led to public safety coming up with a solution and allowing those motorcycles to park down the middle of Whiskey Row, which is not ideal. But it shouldn't fall upon us or you to have to have the responsibility on a Saturday or Sunday, uh, to be dealing with that. Another event, we had the chief of police and myself and his wife out there pulling barricades once he made the decision to open the road because, again, we were hours past the event ending. And I think that this is an area where it would be beneficial to the merchants who have concerns, beneficial to the promoters, the nonprofits, everybody. Uh, it's amazing if you watch Whiskey Row, especially, and I go back to the marathon, the row is dead. There's nobody walking around, the bars are fairly empty, the restaurants are fairly empty. Within 15 minutes of that road being opened, every parking spot is full and there are people everywhere. I, it's, I don't know why, but it is consistently that way with those street closures like that.
And I, I think Charlie too, uh, as well as an event boss, you need the event boss from the charitable side or the, the event side of that too. And, uh, I mean, this kind of kicks back to when I used to DJ weddings, I'd say, tell me who I take my orders from, or else all of a sudden you start getting too many people telling the event boss what needs to happen with that event. So, it's good to have one person and then our person can say, you know what, I was instructed to take, uh, my instruction from him, not you, 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 or you. So, I mean, I think we definitely need to, on that, uh, application, you need to have the person that is making the decisions for the event on that side as well.
And some other things on that particular topic too, that I thought might be helpful would be, you know, observations after action. So, for example, you know, the whiskey marathon, you know, it was dead downtown and the finish line was in front of the Palace or whatever it might be. Some things that we might make, be able to make some adjustments if we have somebody on the ground that can make those observations. We actually did do this on a trial run, unfortunately Oktoberfest, when it rained like three inches. So, we, we got a good start on it and did get some good observations, but, um, so I think there's some value to, to considering this, um, that could, that could help address some of the concerns.
And one last aspect, Joe, to the event boss and, and looking at it from the standpoint of, uh, the event boss who's going to be there the day of should be involved through the approval process. So, the expectations of what the city's providing and not providing are there, because, you know, we've talked almost exclusively about downtown, but where we have some of our other issues as, as we start to see more events taking place outside of downtown. Watson Lake is an example. Things are running fairly smooth there, but we go back to the scheduling conflicts. If an event promoter doesn't book that quickly enough, then you have somebody who's using the Ramada for a wedding and now that entire venue is out of play for a large-scale event to take place. And so, just some thoughts on that front.
Okay, just three more bullet points and I'll be through this. Um, the, you know, consider changes to the street closure process and/or the number of closures. Uh, approval criteria, limits to number extent and simultaneous closures as an example. Council may say, we will never allow all four legs of the courthouse to be closed at any one time. That's happened a few times. We've gotten through it, but is it ideal? Probably not. So, that's an example of, of something we might look at. We might say that, you know, we're not going to close, uh, Montezuma Street on two consecutive weekends or, or things like that. So, that's what that, what that bullet point for discussion is in there for. Also, what was brought up at the stakeholder meetings was maybe a better coordination or reducing Granite Street Parking Garage fee days to encourage use of the garage when the downtown is busy. Uh, some of the stakeholders felt that when we charge on the busy weekends, the parking garage is not full to capacity and people are trying to save the $5 and, and, you know, finding parking wherever they can. Uh, and there may be some truth to that, but I know there's also some, some maintenance costs that need to be offset for the parking garage and what's in, what's in place right now seems to be working pretty well and covering most of that gap right now. And then the last bullet point, and I think, I think a really important one because it could, you know, potentially free up a lot of the issues that, that we're talking about here and that is, we've had some discussions with PUSD about use of the Mile High Middle School football field, either through an IGA with the city or some other conveyance where we could, uh, have some events there. It's a bigger venue. I think that the events could grow a little bit bigger. Um, you can hold more people down there. Freeze-up parking downtown because obviously you're not using the street for the event. Um, the, the facility being bigger and having more off-site parking could allow for the events to grow. I use the Boys and Girls Club event as an example. I think that they, they were about maxed on the footprint that they had for both people and vendors. Uh, and it's a good fundraiser for them, but if they had that property, it could be bigger. Uh, there are issues with that in that there's federal law, no smoking. Locally, the, the local school board, I believe, has some control over the, uh, serving of alcohol, uh, but that discussion will continue after the first of the year. Uh, we did have some discussions with, uh, Mr. Smucker, uh, a couple months ago or about a month and a half ago. So, those discussions are ongoing, but I bring that to you because I think that could be, you know, uh, one more opportunity for us to alleviate some of the concerns that we've expressed today. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or I've got people from the Special Events Committee here too that can answer more specific questions.
Uh, Joe, I think we'll stay away from that. You, uh, you, you heard what the council is interested in. Chris, I think if you'll continue to, to work with Joe and, and we can get our comments to you.
Sure.
That you can take forward. Uh, if you feel it's necessary to have another stakeholder meeting, uh, Joe, well, that's, uh, that's for you, but the next time, uh, the council receives this, we should be prepared to, to have open discussion and then, uh, vote, vote it up or down however we want to go. So, uh, any other questions in the council?
Mayor, I just, I just wanted to thank all the people, I kind of see a lot of them in the, uh, crowd that have done these events. And, uh, you know, I see Matt's here, he's in the process of taking over the boot drop, you know, uh, what a good event for downtown and it would have died if, if he wouldn't have stepped up and jumped in there. And it isn't for personal gain, this is to make a good event downtown. You know, Steve Gottlieb doing the Oktoberfest and the, the myriad of other events that he gets done, you know, he stepped up and did that. If he wouldn't be doing that, would anybody else be doing that? Um, you know, Joe, you were talking and you've put a lot of time into the Boys and Girls Club event as does Jillian and Patty and everybody. These people step up and make these things happen, you know, there's, there may be some greed factor in there somewhere, but I think for the most part, it's people that just want to make good things for Prescott happen and help raise money for the good things in Prescott. So, I just thought, I didn't want this discussion to end without a big thank you to everybody that does this. And, and you know, when Charlie was talking about the, uh, how can we speed up the alcohol process? I mean, how much money was raised at Prescott Strong? I mean, you guys could probably quote that, but they raised a lot of money to help out when money needed to be there to, to get helped out. So, uh, thanks to all the people in Prescott that, that step up.
What we need to come up with is a, uh, if we're going to have regulations, they should be fair to everybody.
Yes.
They should be enforceable and they should be clearly understandable. So, with that said, we'll move forward. Item C.
Item 2C, approval of purchase, purchase of accessible pedestrian signal equipment from JTB Supply Company in an amount not to exceed $16,981.44 to retrofit six traffic signal locations on Willow Creek Road for visually impaired pedestrians.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Approval of this item will authorize the purchase of 32 accessible pedestrian signal push buttons at six intersections along Willow Creek Road extending from Montana Drive to Dan Carroll Heritage Park Road, the entrance to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. Now, these push buttons are a direct retrofit and provide improved safety and accessibility to the existing signalized crossings for the visually impaired. Public Works was approached by Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University on behalf of a, of one of their students who's visually impaired and they requested that an accessible pedestrian system be installed along this segment. The request has the support of the college's Disability Support Services and the Chancellor's Office. Guidance for the installation of APS systems is contained in the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices and it recommends that they be considered based on a request or requests, the potential demand and the complexity of the intersections and the phasing at the intersections. This segment of Willow Creek Road with several T-intersections overlapping right turn arrows and heavy turn movements meets these criteria. With the recent request, proximity to ERAU and location within a commercial corridor, this six signal system is recommended for an APS push button retrofit. If approved, the new system will provide two new vibro-tactile, so they, they basically have a braille arrow and they vibrate to indicate, um, specific actions, push buttons at each existing crossing location. Each button emits an audible locator tone and messages indicating when to walk and when to wait. The system is customizable to each intersection and each crossing, providing specific information and street names. The locator tone and audible messages automatically adjust to ambient noise at the intersection. So, they, they...
They do have a volume control.
Yes, they, they actually, um, they're preset at the factory, although we can adjust that. And so, then if the, the traffic is very quiet, they automatically reduce their beep and their message center. And then, you can just, you can snap your fingers behind them or talk near it and it automatically comes up. And it's just a certain decibel level above that ambient noise. So, that's automatic. And they also can be quieted by time of day. So, we can adjust them at night, if, when no one's out there. You can also just, you know, specifically say you want them to drop 10 decibels in the middle of the night so that the, the beep tone is very quiet. So, that, that is included. The total cost for the APS push buttons will not exceed $16,981.44 and will be paid for from the One-Cent Streets and Open Space Fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jane?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, do we have a master plan for installing these types of audible signals, signals at pedestrian crossings?
So, so, this came about because we obviously, we got a request for a specific system, but we are indicating that we would like to move forward with, uh, consideration of a citywide implementation through the budget process in, in future fiscal years. So, we would look to bring that to council in the upcoming budget process and then indicate, you know, kind of focusing on the, the next locations that might make sense. Those, those might focus on areas where, you know, you have Pike College, Prescott College, areas where we have, um, requests from other visually impaired people.
The DA things.
Yes, exactly. So, that is the intent.
But I'd really like to see an overall plan developed so that we're not always in a reactive mode. I, I don't agree with the manual in that we should just be responding to requests. I think we need to think citywide about pedestrian movement and making that safe for visually impaired, hearing impaired. Um, but this is the kind of thing where I think a pedestrian bicycle advisory committee could be very helpful because they're comprised of people who are on the ground and will take note and give you good input and you can take that and work with it and put it in the budget and get it to the council. in the budget and get it to the council.
Yeah, I think, I think another good thing about this system is, starting with six intersections where it is, it's primarily away from residences. You know, it's in a commercial corridor that will aid not only that student but other students. We've heard from the college that they're beginning to get more students who are visually impaired, and so it allows just the freedom to move off-campus to residences or the businesses in the area. But it'll give us a good test bed for these things. You know, we've never had them, and they are a direct retrofit into our existing equipment. They're made by the same manufacturer. We don't have to change out the main push button assembly. They're just drop-in, but we can do some testing and evaluate that before we go with that whole citywide kind of thing, or as we approach that concept of citywide.
Steve?
Just, I agree with Gene, and just as a recommendation, when you do that, I would suggest, often I'm out and see hubs like Walmart, whether you have apartments that are on the periphery. I see people all the time that have handicap, blind canes crossing the street, and I would suggest that those be the first ones to be looked at because generally that's where your affordable housing is, is around those types of centers, and people do use those quite a bit. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, because I think we are doing a lot of stuff to help handicap people get around town. You know, every time we do these sidewalks now, they have the ramps at the intersections, and it's good to see, you know, this go in, and I think you're right, it's a test area. I'm glad you talked about the volume control, because the one I was thinking about was the one right next to Montana Estates, and, you know, that beeping. I was sitting at a restaurant in Phoenix, and it was pretty quiet, actually, downtown at night, and you could hear that little beeping from that signal from a long ways away. I don't think they must, they must not have had that installed, but I could see that driving you nuts if you had your window open on a summer night here and that thing go off all the time. So, and you can adjust it to ambient noise and you can adjust it to the time of day, which just seems excellent, and I like how we're moving ahead. And when we redo sidewalks, when we redo streets, all these things are now taken into consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, this system, there was an older system that beeped and you could hear it all the way across the intersection. It was made to bring the, the pedestrian across the entire way. These are more to, as you come down the sidewalk, the audible tone is only picked up a certain distance from the push button to get you to the push button. They still rely on the, the person to be able to navigate the intersection, and then as they push it, they get additional information. It'll say, "Wait," and then they'll push again, and when it finally says, "Walk," it'll say, you know, "Walk is on on Willow Creek." They're then responsible to get themselves across the street. But as they move across the street, then as they get close to that button, they can find the next indication. So it's different than the old system, and that was the one that really brought out a lot of complaints, because you had to hear it across traffic, you know, across 100-foot, you know, distance. So this is, this is much different. It's a newer system, and that's why you have to retrofit. You can't just, you have to put new push buttons, and they're, they're much better, and they're, they're the new approved standard.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Councilwoman Wilcox, thank you for being proactive rather than reactive in concert with Councilman Blair. Mobility is another one. It's, it's not just visually impaired and hearing impaired that have problems in this town. And as, as we go along and we're moving through the budget process, very similar to what the manager implemented a couple of years ago with our sidewalk improvement, there is a whole lot that we can do. I, I think you can't really, again, use the budget or solely use the logic or the budget, whichever you would choose to use, and create accessibility for one group without considering everybody else. I mean, there's some constraints, but there's also some reality to life, and part of that reality is that we have people of all natures that live in Prescott, and we can't just pay attention to one group. So I know that I was working with one fellow who has a van for his wheelchair, and you know all about this because I've been with you and I've been with Mr. Geis, et cetera, that if you provide access for one group of people, you need to provide access for other groups of people, too. You can't just limit your, your focus. So, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Russ Willis. You've probably all been acquainted over the years with Jim Knopp as president of Prescott Alternative Transportation. He's been there more than 10 years. He's been president for at least five years, and he's going to return to a more general volunteer role. And unfortunately or fortunately, the mantle of being president of PAT is falling on me. I'm Russ Willis. I live right here in town, a couple blocks away. And I just want to say, anything that can improve life for pedestrians on Willow Creek Road is great, but I really want to support Councilwoman Wilcox's comment that we need ultimately to be looking more comprehensively at these issues, have people who are advocating for the various needs of disabled, handicapped pedestrians, bicyclists, and who know from their own experience what life is like on the ground, because there are intersections all over town that present problems for people. And in making these plans, rather than being reactive or responding only to particular requests, it would be better if we were able to be proactive and to think forward about what needs to be done to make the entire community more accessible to pedestrians and bicyclists. Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, just one last question for Ian. Ian, I was looking at the website for these, this piece of equipment, and it states that you'll be able to collect data from the push button. I assume that that is the number of times the buttons pushed, things of that nature. Have you looked into any of that and what benefit that may have as we're looking at pedestrian traffic and pedestrian options and things into the future?
Well, we had, we actually brought in the, the vendors for both products, and they gave us full demos and showed us some of the, the features of the, of the thing. We didn't talk in detail about that, but certainly, you know, I would be interested in knowing what that is, although I would caution that push button calls are, are difficult to predict if, how accurate they are because people tend to just push, push buttons as they go by. But certainly we'll take advantage of any capability that, that those things have, and the vendor is actually going to come in with the install. You know, they'll, they'll come down and help us to, because the audible messages are all custom to the intersection, they'll be there on the install, and so we're going to get all the features that those things entail. So we'll use that info.
One nice, one nice thing about that is, like you says, I see people on the corner and they think, the more they push it, the more it'll, it'll go. And these ones, when you push it the second time, it says, "Wait, wait." So, and if you hit it enough, it can almost sound like a little rap song, so they're kind of entertaining, too.
Jim, you were going to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I will. Well, Mayor, I'll move to approve the purchase of accessible pedestrian signal APS equipment from JTB Supply Company to retrofit six traffic signal locations on Willow Creek Road in an amount not to exceed $16,981.44.
Second. Motion made, the second, the vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Adam D.
Item 2D, ratification of city contract number 2015-056 with Ripple Industries LLC for emergency SCADA services in an amount not to exceed $22,250 wastewater fund.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Joel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The City of Prescott wastewater treatment plant utilized communication technology that's known as SCADA. Stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Think of it much like an instrument panel on your car. It gives you feedback about the vital statistics of your car. That's what SCADA is to the City of Prescott and the wastewater treatment plant in particular. We use SCADA to monitor, control, and alert staff of operating conditions within the plant. Some of these operating conditions that I'm talking about include power failures. We want to know if we have a power failure. Motors and pumps that are on and off, valves that are open and closed, how much flow's coming into plant, all these conditions we need to know about so we can react to those. It's critical information for proper operation. The system, this system I'm talking about, SCADA, actually calls out our operators, either via a phone call or a text message, to let them know we've got a problem in our plant. So at the SunDog Treatment Plant, we have a system that's been there, been in place for quite a bit of time. It's an old antiquated system, and it's showing signs of failure. In fact, it failed several times over the past month, and that is not a good situation for us because it has obvious consequences when we don't know what's happening in our plant. We don't staff our plants 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So the city obtained three quotes for the services to replace the SCADA equipment, and because time was of the essence, we moved forward with the contract to get this replaced. One of the reasons we moved forward, actually the main reason we moved forward without council approval, was that the costs were anticipated to be five to 10 times more if we would have lost the system. Essentially, we wouldn't be able to gather the information out of the system to rebuild it. We'd be starting from scratch. So we've moved forward with the procurement, and so I'm here today to request council ratification of this procurement. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel?
I'm just glad you feel comfortable about spending money without authorization. It must be important to do so.
It is very important.
Thank you, Joel.
Steve, you haven't heard the, the old adage, "It's easier to ask forgiveness than it is permission."
Oh, no, I sat here with Sam Stigerson, I'm quite aware of that adage.
Anyone else? Comments from the public? Okay, do you have a motion?
Mayor moved to ratify city contract number 2015-056.
Second. Motion made, the second, the vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Adam E.
Item 2E, award of city contract number 2015-057 for Zone 101 Waterworks Materials to Ferguson Waterworks in an amount not to exceed $87,469.60.
Thank you. City contract number 2008-164 is a pre-annexation development agreement between the City of Prescott and Granite Dell's properties. The development agreement, as you're fully aware, spells out specific requirements of the developer and the city. This particular development agreement states that the city shall be responsible, pay owner for the cost to install any onsite water transmission facilities which are upsized at the city's request beyond what, what is necessitated for the owner's development. In this particular situation, the owner needs a 12-inch water main to service his property. However, through modeling, the city has verified that a 16-inch is what the city needs to serve properties beyond. And so it's more cost beneficial for the city to enter into a public-private partnership to install the infrastructure now to provide for future capacity than to have to go in and retrofit the, the water line at a future date. To, to fund the, the upsize and the public-private participation, the city publicly bid the piping materials to determine what the differential cost was. What would the 12-inch have cost the developer, and what would the 16-inch would have cost the developer? And then that differential cost is what the city used to base the, the financial participation on. I've included several exhibits within the council packet about, you know, what the area is, but more specifically about how the procurement was, was carried out, including the bid schedule from the pipe suppliers. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Joel, these upsize agreements are fairly common, and it's a cost-effective way for the city to get the larger infrastructure that we need for future areas from the developer.
Yes, in fact, I can think of a couple of development agreements here of late that have a very similar language within them.
If, if I might also comment that this is a matter of fairness, that if you have an agreement, each of those parties ought to understand exactly what the ground rules are. If you have a piece of property, you propose to develop that property, and then two years later you find out that you're going to have to pay double or triple the cost of that because the city has requested that something much larger than you need for your development is, is being asked for, then that is certainly not an equitable situation. So this assures that there is a level playing field when, in developing areas specifically, when a lot of the information is not known, but you have a rational equitable basis for separating, just like in impact fees, the, the impact or the infrastructure requirements of the development vis-à-vis the more general requirements which extend beyond the development.
And the other side note, just, you know, you look at the number, 87,000, you know, it's quite a bit of money, but it's for a half mile of pipe and trench, which is considerable.
It's a very good value considering doing it now versus waiting and have to tear up the road later and, and install it at a later date. It is very cost advantageous.
Steve, did you have something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Public comments? Was that a thumbs up? Okay.
Let the record reflect, Daniel gave a thumbs up.
We saved a lot of time on that one. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2015-057 for Zone 101 Waterworks Materials to Ferguson Waterworks in an amount not to exceed $87,469.60.
Second. Motion made, the second, the vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for being here. That winds us up. We're adjourned.
Hey, Joel.